Thank you, Jim.
We know you're listening, Jackie.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
While was signed in this, I'd like to approve the minutes from August 2nd.
Yes. I'll second that. Thank you, Mr. Vazias.
All in favor?
While we're doing that.
Wait a second, wait a second.
You can't really do it without it.
You did August 2nd, right?
Yes.
No issues, I can't get it back.
And we're all for it, right?
Yes.
Okay, we can move on to the... I've got...
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, fine.
She made a motion for it. I'll second it.
All in favor?
No, small.
Rachel made the for? Rachel and Jason.
Good, thank you.
All right, we don't have... We didn't do... Oh, we need a motion to sign the warrants.
I would like to go with the same one.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, sorry.
Pull that stack of papers out.
There are nice and organized.
Do we have to share screen? I don't... Is this off here? You're sharing screen. I'm trying to get it big. Oh, there we go. That's what I was looking for.
Just put it over there, we'll find it. Oh, I got it. I'll sign them when they come back.
Well, small, but people have to...
Yes, just a minute, Jackie.
I don't know how that...
All right, and the liquor license, who did that? Oh, she got that one. Okay.
Oh, there we go. There we go.
And who did tell you?
There we go.
But we're gonna have to strike you with the ends.
That's fine.
You made the motion?
There.
There you go.
Hold on a second, Jackie.
They're doing something for us. Hold on, Jackie.
Yeah, I think we should do also the appointment of the school board. Is that we're gonna do the school board interim appointment now and then go back. So, uh...
Can you hear any of them?
We can hear you.
Very barely.
Yeah, but we're not... Tell them we're not doing it. We're not doing it yet.
You, Rick.
All right, we need a motion to appoint an interim school board member. Do we have a motion?
I would, yeah. Yeah, I make a motion that we appoint a...
A school board.
Who is it?
Joseph Swain.
Joseph Swain. Oh.
Hold on a second. All in favor? All in favor?
There you go.
All right, so now we can close our school... We can close the meeting and open up the... We're gonna open up the assessors meeting now.
Do you think you can hear her? So she... What?
Let's drink it.
Okay.
Perfect. Position of school board.
Does she even come back in?
Congratulations.
He's gone.
We couldn't really hear her. I don't know. I've got this up on like thirty.
Where'd she go?
Jackie entered the waiting room, so hit that blue admin.
So we're opening the assessors meeting.
Soon as you get Jackie there.
Oh, because we're not. We've had a lot of stuff to get done, so... Um, I say we hold this appointment papers to the end because that's a lot of signing. Juan, you're here for the celebration committee. Is there something that you particularly wanted to speak about or you wanted to make sure?
No, I'll just...
Do you have a...
We're not gonna be doing...
Go up to where a set of participants?
Well, I think we're gonna take more vote doing it on the school grounds because we're not participating with these...
Request for her to put on a video.
Coming over here and...
No.
So you wanna do the kids on the school grounds. That makes more sense. Except for the fireworks, right?
Oh, yeah, we're doing that.
And is it all Saturday and Sunday?
Yeah.
Well, we can't see you.
Yeah. And I can't see him. We might ask for stop for...
Oh. We can't hear her at all. Okay, thank you, Juan. Are all your people on the papers here? You gave the list that you took everybody.
Is there something on there that we have to...
You wanna just double check that everybody... You wanna check that these are all the papers and these are... See if anybody's missing. Just double... And then you can give them back. We just check and make sure everybody's on there that you want.
Hi, Jackie. We can barely hear you. I don't know what...
Did the phone on speaker?
Yeah.
Okay. I can put you on speaker. I can on the... On my phone. Okay, yeah, hold it on.
That's fair.
She said that's what happened last time.
No, we heard. We heard her last time. We absolutely heard her last time.
Yeah, no, she was fine.
She was fine.
I thought... I thought last time I talked to Renee's phone.
Well, we can hear you. We can hear you now.
Now we can hear you.
You're on, Jackie.
Okay. All right, let's go. All right, so the first thing is, um, we have an abatement for unknown because Penny and Ruby put a lot of time in and figured out who we think owned the property. So we abated it and then we taxed them, um, we taxed them on the commitment. So that was like for five hundred. I believe it was for five hundred something.
Four hundred ninety-five oh nine.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we're doing the abatements right now. And then the other one? And the other one is eighty-five sixty-three for account number seven sixty-four.
And who's... Who was that?
We don't usually... I don't usually mention names. We just mention, uh...
These are public though. Assessment and abatements are public.
Peter Glidden.
Yeah, that's where...
Who was that for? Uh, I guess I didn't...
One was unknown. I mean, it says unknown on this one.
The eighty-five?
Peter Glidden.
Yes.
Peter Glidden, yeah. So I had screwed up last time and put the wrong... So Ruby brought that to my attention and I checked.
That's it?
I'll make the motion.
That's it for that. And then, um, you have commitment papers there. I'll hope you'll sign.
Assessor certification of assessment. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
So let's make... Jackie, let's make a motion to accept the abatements first.
I move the way accept the abatements.
I'll second.
Unknown and Peter Glidden.
All in favor? Okay, Jackie, explain the certificate of assessment again for...
Okay, so I did the, uh, I did the commitment today and the, uh, uh, the, uh, the due dates and everything, you know, is self-explanatory. Those are the dates that you guys voted at town meeting. Uh, the, uh, bill rate, I believe, was fourteen-four, which was a little higher than I wanted, but that's what it was. And, uh, better than what it used to be. And it's, um, uh, I added the overlay a little extra because of all the changes that were made. I just wanted to make sure it was covered. Um, and if anybody asks, the town expenses went up about, uh, the municipal and school and county all went up together about ten percent. Uh, but the valuation went up, Jesus, it almost doubled if you look at that, if you look at the tax rate calculation sheet. So the bills are ready to go. You guys sign that, um, so that you can get them to the printer and, uh...
So Jackie, the evaluation isn't on these sheets, correct?
Um, they're on the tax rate calculation sheet.
One more of those. That's this one and this one. And then there's another.
Did I give you one of those where it was about two hundred and thirty million and then it was before it was about a hundred and thirty?
Okay. I don't have it. I'm sorry. It's just one copy here. I'm sorry. So we need... So we have copies?
Do we make copies of it?
Yeah. There's the original sign.
Okay, well, wait till you get back.
Jackie, on that, this is something about rate. I looked at it quickly. It was like fifteen, not fourteen.
The mill rate?
After we fixed the, uh, the county, we had had the... At first, we had the wrong county thing and we had had the wrong... So it came up, I believe it's fifteen-four on that tax rate calculation sheet.
You have it?
Um, someone else should share.
Oh, yeah, so you guys... Okay.
Yeah, where does it say? Oh, yeah, fifteen-four. I see now. That is different.
You have fifteen-four.
Probably about eighty-five thousand or, um, for mistakes and, um, other things, uh, abatements. And, um, so, yeah, so we're ready to go and hopefully everything is correct. I want you all to keep me in your thoughts and prayers.
So hopefully nobody knows where you live, right, Jackie?
So, you know, I move every ten days.
Can you explain to me why we have... Are those the same thing that did... Done differently?
That's a Jackie question.
I can't... For some reason, I can't see you guys. I can only see Amy, which is unnerving.
I know, for some reason, they need something.
So do you know what?
I need my daughter and roll back this year that I'll be... Anyway, um, can I explain to you what? Would you like an explanation of?
Um, well, we're just looking at paperwork.
Papers here. We have an assessor.
We're there, you guys. Two at once. No one can hear.
All right, so in front of us, we have a two-piece paper entitled Assessor's Certificate of Assessment. Then we also have a set of paper... A set of, uh, paper, Certificate of Assessment to Return to Municipal Treasurer State of Maine. Yes.
Yeah.
What's the difference on them? The numbers look kind of the same.
They are the same.
They are the same. Okay.
They are the same. They have about fifteen different things. I don't know why. They have four different things for you to sign.
Oh, okay.
And they're all, uh, they're all the same numbers, but in different orders and different...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So we only have three that I can see. Certificate of Commitment, as Nancy said, Assessor's Certificate and Certificate to Be Returned to Municipal Treasurer. Right, so three. We have three. Are we supposed to have four?
No, that one's on top.
Yeah, three might be it. I can't... Believe it or not, I can't remember what, but they're all, uh, they're generated by the program after I do the, uh, tax rate calculation sheet. Then I go in and put, uh, who the collector is and the treasurer, and then it prints out these forms that are, uh, that are required by the state. And they have a little state number, but in kind of different formation.
That's what it looks like.
Okay.
Just to make sure that it all comes out how even, which it does if you're on the computer. But back in the old days, it used to drive me crazy because they had...
So Jackie, when are we gonna... When is the taxpayers gonna know what their new assessment is? When they're...
When they get their... When they get their bill next week.
Yeah, okay. And I just have one... I don't know if you would know, or if you have it in front of you, and I can find the answer myself if I go hunting through last year's paperwork. But the total taxable valuation of real estate on this form is...
Yeah, it is. Last year, it was a hundred and thirty million, I believe, if you have that tax rate calculation sheet.
Yep.
Um, it says at the top something like, I think it's two hundred and thirty million.
Two twenty-one, eight seventy-nine.
Two twenty-one, so it's about a hundred million.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you. If you knew what last year's, uh, real estate valuation was.
I believe it was a hundred. I believe it was approximately a hundred and thirty million.
And do you by chance have a recollection of what the total valuation for personal property was last year? It's one million ninety-five thousand six hundred ninety-nine on this one.
Yeah, I think it's approximately the same this year.
Okay.
I don't remember it being, uh, a big increase.
Okay.
And I said it in the paper in front of me, but I don't...
No, it's okay.
That wasn't... That was... That one didn't... That didn't change too much because most of it is based on people's declaration.
Right.
You know?
Okay, great.
Um, sometime next year, it would be nice to try to have a meeting with, uh, some of the people in town, business people, including lots of them, and try to, try to get the petty program going, which means that they don't pay... They don't pay the taxes. They just make a declaration and the state pays us. And we can get quite a bit of money out of that. But I realize, as in other towns that I work for, they have lots of them. They don't have a whole lot of trust of government.
Yeah.
So it's very hard to convince them that this isn't gonna cost them anything, that this is gonna get the town money. But, um, like I said, we can give it a shot, uh, on another date. I thought it was, uh, imperative to try to get the taxes out soon enough so that people could, uh, people would have one end time to realize what to end to pay.
Oh, you do. You have to sign one of your papers.
So Jackie, I guess my question is, what is behind a hundred million valuation today? What caused the worries on the money?
Well, I would say that the average person, uh, has had an increase probably forty-five percent to fifty percent.
What?
Maybe a little more, uh, uh, short frontage increased more than that because the town, uh, and that increased more than that. So I would say, uh, it was... Providing between ninety-two and a hundred percent of real estate sales values. So the town of Lubec, as you know, in the last couple of years, has had a huge amount of, uh, increase in sales.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, more heavily on the, um, shoreline zoning side, but definitely on both sides. But one of the problems that was, I'm gonna say this to the school, I've been saying this, it's the way it went because you had a rebound. You also had people that were being taxed on the old constables and then people that were being taxed on the new constables. Then everybody's on the same cost schedule and then I'm going out to a lot of different...
So Jackie, you're breaking up. I think we're gonna move on and see if we can get you connected better because I am sure... Are we allowed to... You did mention that we can give your number out for anybody who has questions, but not your address.
Yeah, definitely. They can have my... They can have my phone number. Everybody knows where I live. I'm not concerned.
Okay.
And they have my... They have a new email for me, which is jrobinssessing@gmail.com, so they can also do that. So whichever way they want to, I have no problem. Anybody calling me or talking to me, okay?
Okay, thanks a lot, Jackie.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye, Jackie.
So jrobinssessing@gmail.com. Definitely said. I'd like to clarify something.
What did I say?
Did she say individual tax rates for individual areas, about forty-five to fifty percent?
Yes.
Average.
That's what she said, an average. Well, these...
She said heavier part would be on coastal.
Average, how many months?
Fifteen. Well, I thought she said that it was gonna not be so bad because the mill rate went way down. I guess you're gonna have to...
Wait, she did say...
I don't know that, yeah. I didn't hear that.
I didn't hear that.
No, that's what she said.
Yeah, she did. She did say that.
But I think she meant the evaluation.
Well, absolutely, the evaluation did it double.
Yeah.
But, I mean, individuals...
But then... But then fifteen to twenty... The other... Last year was twenty-three, so it's gonna go down fifteen. So it's gonna go up, but it's not gonna go up much, as you said.
Right.
If you take into consideration the mill rate.
I think last year's mill rate was something...
Twenty-two, wasn't it?
Twenty-four.
Twenty... I'm gonna say twenty-five or twenty-four point two one.
Twenty-four point two.
What I try to explain to people is it's on what the school spends and what we spend. Period. Your taxes aren't gonna go crazy if the school budget doesn't triple and the town budget doesn't triple. The money that we spend at the school or the town level is what they get taxed.
We're so deceived trying to listen to her on home. You shouldn't sit here explaining this.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think once the tax goes out, figure out what'll invite her here and then...
I'll have a full audit.
There'll be a winch.
We need to sign. We need to sign these papers.
I tried to explain it to people and she's like...
Well, I think at least experience was with reassessment, you know, some people go up, some people go down.
We'll just try to see.
You know, like...
A big winch in here probably in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, possible, that's right.
So, uh...
I think what you're gonna see is a board of folks...
I would like to make a motion that we sign the assessors so they can get an assessment.
Oh, sorry.
We charge the municipal treasurer and he... Then we get a commitment. Second, all in favor? And then we can now reopen the floor meeting. Oh, I see what she means. There's two places to sign here.
There's three places.
Well, there's four. There's two on one page, so there's actually four. Here, there's one, two, three, four. I think that's what she was referring to.
Yep, there is four. There's one on the page two.
Did you get all your appointments? They're all... They're all in order. So if you need any of that, buddy else, add it in if you can. What's the skip to Climate Smart Working Waterfront Project?
Oh, that's...
I don't know much about that.
That's an interesting read, the stuff they sent in that, that, um...
I didn't...
Well, in a nutshell...
Can you share it?
In a nutshell, Amanda Lyons referred the town of Lubec for this study that, um... I gotta find the paper. Don't want to get it wrong. Anyway, it's this study that is on, um... There we go. Amanda Lyons recommended four case studies featured in the Climate Smart Working Waterfronts project that the Gulf of Maine Research Institute is working on. Primary objective of this project is to assist coastal Maine communities in envisioning and planning for resilient, low-carbon, and thriving working waterfront economies. So in conducting this partnership with the town of Lubec, they would expect to host two meetings in Lubec. One would be convening working waterfront stakeholders to understand their experiences with climate risk and opportunities and their needs in addressing them. And the other one would be with community members to deepen our understanding of how the working waterfront contributes to Lubec's social and economic vitality as well as socialize potential response options. So they would do community surveys as well as interviews. Project is scheduled to go through spring of 2025 with the first round of meeting surveys and interviews happening between November 2023 and April 2024. And a second series of interviews focused on co-developing adaptation and mitigation strategies happening during the summer and fall of 2024. And that's kinda in a nutshell what the two pages say.
Do we have to agree?
We have to, um...
Have we received it? Do we have to agree? I mean, do we have to make a motion to...
I would... I would hear anything about this.
I would imagine we'd have to make a motion. Amanda didn't bring it up.
Well, reaching out on the recommendation of Amanda Lyons to see if the town of Lubec is interested.
Well, I would say...
I would say we table it until we have Amanda come in and explain.
Yeah, yeah. I think we need to...
How to get on these ends?
The email from me might...
Yeah, we did. Oh, from Stephanie's son?
Yeah.
Is that just for commercial or was it also private? Landowners on shore, though?
She didn't actually say the one of that. It's community members. And then stakeholders, I think, are the words they used around it. So I think it's kinda everybody. At least that's...
I think it looks like a great program. There's only, you know, they're only keeping four...
Right.
Studies. And the reason why Amanda recommended us is because we have ninety-two miles of shoreline.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And most of it's clam plants. A lot of it is clam plants. And we have the best clam. That's in the state of Maine. And we're trying to hold on to them. And this looks like we're trying to do some sort of, you know, response. Their list?
Just a quick comment. This would align very nicely with what the comprehensive plan is working on because a big part of that right now is the resiliency factor. So that, I think, would coordinate beautifully.
Yeah, I think we should...
And also the fact that the fishing industry is not as robust as it once was. Here.
I'll undertake a motion that we act as one of these four studies.
I'll make the motion.
I made a motion and we table it until...
Oh, so we... Well, we get a second on the table?
Well, we didn't ask.
Oh, sorry. You seconded the table.
I think I would second that. Because it may have some discussion with the comprehensive.
To see how they do. Okay, so let's put it on the agenda for next week, next meeting. All in favor of tabling it? I'm opposed to it. Okay, one opposed. But she says we'll put that up. I think we could run forward as well, but if you want more discussion, that's always good idea to know more about.
Amanda's... She's a wealth of knowledge about stuff.
Well, that's right. She should've been here to recommend it, so.
I'd like to see it. Go ahead, go ahead.
A lot of... Talking going on. EJ Prescott presentation?
He was gonna come down and speak, but he isn't at this time because he wants to meet with Bruce. Bruce first.
Okay, so we go...
Dickie and Ruby sat in that presentation with him the other day.
What they... So Dickie's up next anyway.
It's an account that we look into because we're within the process of looking at catch basins, manhole covers. They do rises and replacement rings and everything, which we have none of. So it's to the point that I started researching on it and culvert. We just go to him. Everything we do, we just pick the phone up, call him in Lumber, just the same as Joe Blow down the street would. And make an order. We get charged the same. There's nothing... No difference across the board. So I was like, well, let's just make a phone call and see what goes on. And they called and spoke with Ruby about it. And they have different, um, stages of the plans that they could offer us as a whole. Well, if we was all on board for the town, it would better everybody's services. But that's what he wants to talk to the sewer department about was because he only spoke to the public works side of it. And on the public works side of it, we only deal with the culverts and the catch basin and anything that we'd have to do on the rising.
So they are for like maintenance, like the issues of the sewer and the supplies?
Okay.
And so you're creating for more like a wholesale price than a...
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
And you anticipate using it more, not just for what you're doing now?
Well, the benefit was is the reason why I was looking for it is in one of the things that you asked me to do when you wanted me to look at the future of the roads and some goals and plans and what we need to do. And as you know, we just spent a hundred and three thousand dollars having Donovan's out here doing these manholes.
Yeah.
If we do any more hot-topping in town right now, we will be doing... We will be doing the same thing that he just did. Hot-topping over the top of manholes. We've got catch basins. We've got catch basins that's already too low and they need to be brought out.
Yeah, who's fixing the catch basins? They're terrible.
We... I called the state. They were supposed to come down and look at them and put a ticket in. So to the point, I contacted them. They come down and he sat there and explained the different things that they have and the different programs. There's a couple... There's a couple of programs that would... Could possibly benefit us more if we was all on board this compared to just one. They're willing to work with us, rehabulous.
Good.
And we would still get, you know, possibly a better price than what we would get calling over to Machias and hopefully finding something.
Yeah, because you're gonna pay top dollar.
But you can't get... You can't get the same... The supplies for manholes and catch bases from him in Lumber or by... You have to go... You have to go to a supplier that does that type of work.
I think somebody said... To be honest, Dickie, we all have to pull the rope in the same direction. It's gonna work better.
Well, and the thing of it is, Jason, and it's like I... It's the same thing. It's the same thing like I said this morning when we're dealing with school board issues. I want to stop seeing this town be proactive instead of reactive. I'm all the time looking... I'm all the time looking over my shoulder and trying to figure out where I'm gonna get the work from, or how I'm gonna do the work, because we, we don't look at it straight on, we look at it over our shoulder.
Exactly.
And I just see, we counted them down there today, there's like almost the same amount. So there's a hundred thousand dollars worth of rings and risers that needs to be done down on Water Street right now, before we, with the hot top there. We, we just went through town meeting, got two hundred thousand dollars raised to do hot top. So we're gonna do hot topping, and then turn around and dig it all back up again.
No, we've already done that on page.
You gotta do that other thing first.
Right, I mean, this is a part of the thing that we're supposed to get in, get in touch and plan and look at, and decide what we was gonna do and how we was gonna do it.
You mean, look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why he became road manager.
So it's to the point, you know, that was the purpose of the EJP representative coming down to talk to you, because we wanted, we, when we looked at it, we wanted you folks to be on board with it.
There are a lot of other incentives with the program, um, including, um, better pricing, but they also have like a two-hour delivery at no extra cost, if you need something. They will bring it up in their personal trucks if they have to. But, so that way you're not spending money for somebody to drive and then paying mileage when they could be, have, you know, been working. And now they're driving to Bangor to pick up one part that we need, and then you're also paying mileage for that.
And one part of the program also offers one day of mandatory, mandatory training that's required by law.
Oh, nice.
So, part of that program would, would, they would send, they would send a representative down, and in the meantime, anybody that we have in town, whether it be fire department, public works, sewer department, anybody could set in on that and, uh.
So I have to retalk to Bruce, he's gonna come talk to us?
Bruce is right there.
He's gonna.
So you're wearing one tonight.
Good.
Well, wait, Prescott, so you went and actually spoke to Bruce.
Okay, after, after that, plans will come back someday and talk to us?
Yes.
Okay.
So Bruce, what's your thought on it?
Absolutely.
Dickie, you sound like you're all in.
I, I mean, and I am, and I'm speaking for, like I say, for my behalf, and I mean, if doing the road work, if we do this stuff beforehand, he showed us what it, what it takes, it's a ma, it could be as simple as popping that cover off and then an adjustable ring, right? That would wind it inside, and it expands out, and it would go either from inch and a half an inch to an inch and a half. And we're looking at, outside of what we have to look at now because of previous paving, we're looking at putting an inch down for any of the recommendations that we got from county for this year. So I mean, it would be as simple as that aspect if we caught it now, and instead of keep going what, what's been done.
Oh yeah, no, we're not gonna pay over the manhole covers anymore.
So as part of that road, uh, the two hundred thousand can go to lifting these things up, so that we can pave it correctly? Or is it something coming out of a different fund?
I mean, we've got. We have got different projects going, so it's just to the point that, you know, depending on what you wanna do and how much you want, how much you wanna do one particular year to the net. Because it's nothing, just because the, we, we raised two hundred thousand dollars this year. It is, I don't wanna see us just go spread two hundred thousand dollars of hot top out there, if it's not gonna be worth doing.
And what kind of conversation on price was this service?
It was, it was, it did cost, it was a, it was a no-cost service to us to join them. But what it does is it puts them in a competitive bracket in order to, like, if we wanted to put inventory on site according to what I would need. So it was like, if I wanted to say, we wanted to have a half a dozen culverts out to the garage with two different sizes, two different sizes or whatever, or half a dozen catch basins, and Donovan's called and was looking for one here because there was, uh, there was a problem with one, I don't know where he found it, but. We just had a project down right here on the corner of Church Street and, uh, Summer Street that was broke from last winter. And we just got that, that done, and if we would've had the stock, we could've, it could've just been.
So really it's just some kind of contractual commitment to purchase from him for a period of time?
And if, but if, and the thing is, it is, is if it's an emergency basis and we don't have it, by all means, they're not requiring us not to get taken care of.
Okay.
The only thing they ask is that you may say, uh, we wouldn't got this from Hammond because we needed it.
What's the term, is it a year?
There's no actual contract to it, so it's just an agreement that would be signed, um, and we can get out of it at any time.
So there's no.
So there's just a write-up, hey, we don't wanna participate in this program anymore, within ninety days, we're out of that program.
Let me ask you, Dickie, how many manhole covers and rings do we have, Bruce? How many do we have on stock, if something happened?
I know storm rings, no.
I'm talking to manhole covers and.
I'm not sure what, what, what sort of.
Two or three, and I've got ten or twelve, uh, rings.
Yeah, so storm, storm, catch bases.
So is the water department responsible for the drains on, on this, on the town roads, on the town roads?
Not for the storm rings, no, public, public works.
And probably.
And they're about, what, five inches low, six inches low on spot.
Yes.
They're really bad on the state roads, I mean, like, you gotta not get on the, get in those holes.
So, just to clear my mind here, you're, you're going to order from these people, if all goes well, that you can stockpile, would you be able to stockpile things here?
Well, we could, but we don't really want to, because, I mean, we would still be purchasing them.
Yeah.
And they would actually catalog that, what we have for inventory.
Okay.
As we use it, they would know that it was being used, because they, they scan it in, and it's, and it's a scan-out system.
Okay.
So if we was to put any type, for, anywhere across the town, whatever, whatever it is that we use. If we use, like this project right here, they would know that we just used ten of them, and they're gonna say, we need to get ten of them back to the town.
So how are the prices compared to like?
And where's the money coming from?
Viking Lumber or.
Well, for, I know for like public works, we have in, in our budget, itemized.
Do you have money to take on to this program?
Four, like, culverts.
Yeah.
Storm drains, so I mean, we have it, it is in the budget, so I mean, we work out of it, but what I'm trying to avoid is, we just, we just bought four culverts for the Luke Gold Road this past week, and we used over fifty percent of our line for, for the year.
So what is the difference in price? I mean.
I, I don't know for sure. I don't know for sure.
Be great if they could just give us a breakdown on some of the materials that we're gonna use.
And we will, we will get, he was.
The program sounds great.
He wanted to do it, so we would have it for everybody, not give me one and then turn around and do it again.
Right.
So that he would know roughly what we was gonna be using, and give us, give us prices on the material that we want and what we would use, not something.
You go ahead and give the prices, that's not gonna hurt.
Give them a list of what you.
Or invite them to the prices.
Can we compare that though, to your regular buyer?
Sure, yeah.
That'd be great.
Oh, well, absolutely.
Same, same to you, Bruce, you know, let's, let's get a price list together, what we need, and, and, and we can compare to like a Viking or.
Because I mean, I, I mean, this week here, I started, like, you want me to keep going?
Yeah, Dickie, I just wanna just say that before we leave this topic, is this part of your update? You were next on the agenda for your regular update, so you have other updates, do you think, why would, why don't we?
And it's talking about.
Bring the figures back to us like everybody asked, and we'll go to the next, your next update. We have a road manager, it's amazing, huh?
Yeah.
It's like, it's pretty good.
So, even though I drove down several times this week, and I cursed you uphill and down Dale for the stuff, I have to say, good job.
Get along. You're not the front, you're not at the front.
I know, I know, remember what I always say.
All right, Dickie, so we're up with another update.
For in-town, and, and earlier in the summer, we had Sean come down from County Concrete and give us estimates for, for paving in-town. And, um, in total, this, this was a wit, this was more or less a wish list, anyway. But in total, we asked for three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in estimates for, for town. And it was for everything from water, lower water, Johnson Street Monument, Summer, pretty, a lot of things that do in my area.
What about Pleasant, right there, where they come up that hill?
Pleasant, Pleasant, yes, it starts right from the boat ramp, so that'd be where Johnson Street goes down and goes straight across.
And that's what it was, three twenty-nine?
For the, for everything.
For everything. But we have two hundred, right?
Actually, by, by looking at what we've got and what we've done, outside of right going the manholes and the catch basins for Water Street. Uh, the water company's working on upgrading the height, the height down there, they're replacing, they're lifting, uh, all their shut-offs, and they're, they're getting prepared for us to do paving.